You okay? Good evening, the June eighteenth, twenty twenty five, District two oh two. Board of Ed-- I'm sorry, wrong script. Okay, the June twenty third Board of Education meeting will commence as of six thirty P M. I will call the meeting to order. Charlie, can you call the roll please?
Ms. Dalton.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Morales.
Here.
Dr. Rulin.
Here.
Ms. Seid.
Here. All right, we have a quorum. Are there any agenda revisions, Dr. Wood?
Uh, yes, we'll need to appoint Secretary Pro Tem.
Okay, I would like to appoint, uh, Dr. Rulin as our Secretary Pro Tem.
I accept.
All right, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn to the closed session for the purposes of?
One point five personnel, one point six collective negotiations, one point one zero student discipline.
Motion?
Second.
Margaret's motion, Dr. Rulin second.
Ms. Dalton. Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Morales.
Yes.
Dr. Rulin.
Yes.
Ms. Seid.
Yes. All right, we will be adjourned until approximately seven thirty P M.
Student Services Conference, Charlie.
Thank you.
All right, it is 7:30, so we will welcome everybody back to our Board of Education meeting. Charlie, can you please call the board?
Dr. Rulon?
Here.
Ms. Felton?
Here.
Ms. Morelos?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Still here.
Ms. Sain.
Yes, I need as well. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is behind me at the board. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. All right, item 3.1, communications this evening.
Good evening. As we finish another year and close another chapter in our district's story, I'm filled with immense pride what we've done this year and accomplished and who we've celebrated. Our students have exceeded expectations in many, many ways. Our staff has continued to give of themselves and innovate with teaching methods and continue to put emphasis on the kids they serve over themselves on a daily basis. Grateful for that. Every year, I'm humbled with everything that we do. I know administratively, our goals are really to celebrate the things that we've done and the accomplishments our staff, community, and students have done. I feel like we've done that. Additionally, try to give our administrators and staff tools so they can be successful. Thrilled with that. And then really, at our board committees last week, just so proud of the work of our strategic plan and the work that had been done. Really proud of my team over here to the left and just every day grateful to work with them. But then when you see it all put together, it just highlights all the work that's done. So thank you for that. I know we work with our teachers and community as well, but that was very encouraging to me. As we head into summer, I hope our students continue to learn, explore, do some fun activities. Our staff can reinvest in themselves, take a break for them, and really kind to reflect on the difference they make, but then also sharpen the saw so they're ready for the start of the school year. And then really, to our families and community members, thank you for your continued support, trust, and partnership. Congratulations to everyone on a successful year. I hope we can enjoy the summer, stay safe, and then we'll be back in August.
Any other communications?
Nope.
Okay. All right, well, then good evening. District 202 has had several under activities getting underway this summer, including summer school, professional development, facilities updates, and planning for the 2025-2026 school year. Summer school programming is currently serving our ESY, bilingual summer school, and middle and high school students, in addition to summer sports and music camps. We are proud to announce that 77 District 202 students earned the State of Illinois Seal of Biliteracy, demonstrating high-level proficiency in English and at least one additional language through reading, writing, listening, and speaking skills. To earn this distinction, students must pass a foreign language AP test, Advanced Placement, with a score of three or higher. District 202 has recognized students with this achievement since 2018, and a complete list of our Seal of Biliteracy winners is available on our website. So congratulations to those students who graduated in 2025. District 202 is partnering with Kendall and Will Counties to offer back-to-school wellness clinics this summer. These events are open to all District 202 students regardless of location and include, in June through October, Kendall County Health Department Immunizations Clinics; June through October, also Will County Health Department Immunization Clinics; July 12th, Will County Back-to-School Health Fair; and July 26th, the District 202 Wellness Day in Will County, providing physicals, immunizations, and dental services. Information about these events is posted on our website. And as we conclude our final board meeting of the 2024-2025 school year, I want to acknowledge the exceptional work of our staff, administrative team, and my fellow board members for continuing to a successful school year for our students. And thanks to you, our students, staff, and community, for all that you do to support our mission as we prepare our learners for the future. Thank you. Okay, do we have any board salutes? Kind of quiet, but school year wrapped up, so that makes sense. Do we have any special recognitions tonight, Linda?
Nope.
Okay, and we do not have any public comments?
Nope.
We are just cruising along. All right. Then I would like a motion to approve the consent agenda items 6.2 through 6.5 as presented.
Second.
Right motion, Joshua second. Charlie?
Yes, please.
Ms. Morelos?
Yes.
Dr. Rulon?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Ms. Sain.
Yes, motion carries. Okay. So with that, I would like to extend our congratulations to the following individuals. And we have a longer list tonight than usual, but that doesn't mean any less in terms of how heartfelt these congratulations are for their new administration administrative positions beginning July 1st, 2025. Dr. Joe O'Brien, Director of Administration and Personnel; Kai Freeman, Principal at Plainfield East High School; Deborah Odegaard Carpenter, Principal, Dragon Point Middle School; and Kristin Salgado, Principal at Crystal Lawns Elementary School. Congratulations.
We're really grateful for our individuals and staff. Proud that all of these guys were assistant principals at one point in District 202. Long careers, all of them. Believe they're ready for their next step in leadership as well. And Dr. O'Brien and Mr. Freeman, while they came to the district not at the start of their career, they've really shined as they've gone through that. And a special point of pride for us, Ms. Salgado and Ms. Carpenter are former Plainfield High School graduates as well. And so it's really nice when you have Plainfield High School students come back and then succeed within our system and then continue to lead our schools in the future. So congratulations to you guys. Thank you for coming out. Wanted to put a name with a face with our new board members. Hope you can have a restful summer, and we'll see you June 30th, I think. No, July 30th.
If I might, I just want to tell you guys, we really like the way you handle responsibilities, so we're going to blame you for some stuff.
That's it. That really is it. So thank you. You guys can stay or go. It's up to you. I know it's a little influx here, but we did want our board to see you guys and recognize you. Linda is doing stories on all of you as well, too. So we'll see those. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Before you finish, Tom.
Yes.
All right, moving on to item seven, report on personnel policy administration.
Yes, I can do that. So we met on June 25th. Director of Community Relations, Linda Taylor, updated the group on the Community Relations Department portion of the strategic plan. And Dr. Fink and I updated the committee on the Administration and Personnel's portion of the strategic plan. So tonight, I'm looking for a motion, 7.2 of Personnel Policy and Administration Agenda Item 7.3 to 7.4 as presented.
Margarita's motion, Nora second. Felton?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Morelos?
Yes.
Ms. Sain. Yes, motion carries. Well, that was short and sweet. Thank you. Moving on to Curriculum and Technology, Dr. Rulon.
I don't know, we had Jennifer Orlas do that. No.
Whatever you need.
So we met June 18th, Wednesday, at still 6:30, but next week it's going to be at, or next time it's going to be at 6 o'clock in August. So what we ended up talking about for a majority of that time was actually looking at the updates to the strategic plan for both CNI and also Student Services. Those presentations are in the packet from that meeting as well. Good information about where we are with strategic plan and what's to come. So very helpful with that. In addition to that, we had a conversation about high school graduation credit increases with the move to the eight-period day. We had a discussion and presentation about changes that would ultimately affect graduation credit decrease and then also because of that, would also be an amendment to the High School Curriculum Guide, both of which will be up for motion here momentarily. The final piece that we reviewed was the Westmere Elementary School Improvement Plan. Again, initial draft of that for approval, which would then come back as a more robust version later on. When they have staff that comes back after summer, things like that. So with that, that's my update. And because of our conversation, I'm also looking to move for items, Agenda Items 8.3 through 8.5 to be approved as presented, and that is my motion.
Dr. Orlas' motion? Mr. Nichols' second?
I, so I do have a thought that I shared during the meeting. I would love to see, as part of the graduation credit increase, still a consideration before we publish this and have to then change it later, one half of those two credits to be put toward personal finance as a requirement as opposed to sub semi-elective in the consumer area.
All right, it is 7:30, so we will welcome everybody back to our Board of Education meeting. Charlie, can you please call the board?
Dr. Rulon?
Here.
Ms. Dalton?
Here.
Ms. Morelos?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Still here.
Ms. Seiden?
Yes, me as well. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is behind the board. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. All right, item 3.1, communications this evening.
Good evening. As we finish another year and close another chapter in our district's story, I'm filled with immense pride what we've done this year and accomplished and who we've celebrated. Our students have exceeded expectations in many, many ways. Our staff has continued to give of themselves and innovate with teaching methods and continue to put an emphasis on the kids they serve over themselves on a daily basis. Grateful for that. Every year, I'm humbled with everything that we do. I know administratively, our goals are really to celebrate the things that we've done and the accomplishments our staff, community, and students have done. Feel like we've done that. Additionally, try to give our administrators and staff tools so they can be successful. Thrilled with that. And then really at our board committees last week, just so proud of the work of our strategic plan and the work that had been done. Really proud of my team over here to the left and just every day, you know, grateful to work with them. But then when you see it all put together, just highlights all the work that's done. So thank you for that. I know we work with our teachers and community as well, but that was very encouraging to me. As we head into summer, I hope our students, you know, continue to learn, explore, do some fun activities. Our staff can reinvest in themselves, take a break for them, and really kind to reflect on the difference they make, but then also sharpen the saw so they're ready for the start of the school year. And then really to our families and community members, thank you for your continued support, trust, and partnership. Congratulations to everyone on a successful year. I hope we can enjoy the summer, stay safe, and then we'll be back in August.
Any other communications?
No.
Okay. All right, well, then, good evening. District 202 has had several under activities getting underway this summer, including summer school, professional development, facilities updates, and planning for the 2025-2026 school year. Summer school programming is currently serving our E S Y bilingual summer school and middle and high school students, in addition to summer sports and music camps. We are proud to announce that 77 District 202 students earned the State of Illinois Seal of Bilinguality, demonstrating high-level proficiency in English and at least one additional language through reading, writing, listening, and speaking skills. To earn this distinction, students must pass a foreign language A P test, Advanced Placement, with a score of three or higher. District 202 has recognized students with this achievement since 2018, and a complete list of our Seal of Bilinguality winners is available on our website. So congratulations to those students who graduated in 2025. District 202 is partnering with Kendall and Will Counties to offer back-to-school wellness clinics this summer. These events are open to all District 202 students regardless of location and include, in June through October, Kendall County Health Department Immunizations Clinics; June through October, also Will County Health Department Immunization Clinics; July 12, Will County Back-to-School Health Fair; and July 26, the District 202 Wellness Day in Will County, providing physicals, immunizations, and dental services. Information about these events is posted on our website. And as we conclude our final board meeting of the 2024-2025 school year, I want to acknowledge the exceptional work of our staff, administrative team, and my fellow board members for continuing to a successful school year for our students. And thanks to you, our students, staff, and community, for all that you do to support our mission as we prepare our learners for the future. Thank you. Okay, do we have any board salutes? Kind of quiet, but school year wrapped up, so that makes sense. Do we have any special recognitions tonight, Linda?
Nope.
Okay, and we do not have any public comments?
Nope.
We are just cruising along? All right. Then I would like a motion to approve the Consent to Agenda items 6.2 through 6.5 as presented.
Second.
Greg motion, Joshua second. Charlie?
Yes, please.
Ms. Morelos?
Yes.
Dr. Rulon?
Yes.
Dalton?
Yes.
Ms. Seiden?
Yes, motion carries. Okay. So with that, I would like to extend our congratulations to the following individuals. And we have a longer list tonight than usual, but that doesn't mean any less in terms of how heartfelt these congratulations are for their new administration administrative positions beginning July 1, 2025. Dr. Joe O'Brien, Director of Administration and Personnel; Kai Freeman, Principal at Plainfield East High School; Deborah Odegaard Carpenter, Principal, Dryden Point Middle School; and Kristin Selgato, Principal at Crystal Logs Elementary School. Congratulations.
We're really grateful for our individuals and staff. Proud of all of these guys were assistant principals at one point in District 202. Long careers, all of them. Believe they're ready for their next step in leadership as well. And Dr. O'Brien and Mr. Freeman, while they came to the district like not at the start of their career, they've really shined as they've gone through that. And a special point of pride for us, Ms. Selgato and Ms. Carpenter are former Plainfield High School graduates as well. And so it's really nice when you have Plainfield High School students come back and then succeed within our system and then continue to lead our schools in the future. So congratulations to you guys. Thank you for coming out. Wanted to put a name with a face with our new board members. Hope you can have a restful summer, and we'll see you June 30, I think. No, July 30.
If I might, I just want to tell you guys, we really like the way you handle responsibilities, so we're going to blame you for some stuff.
That's it, that really is it. So, thank you. You guys can stay or go, it's up to you. I know it's a little influx here, but we did want them, our board, to see you guys and recognize you. Linda is doing stories on all of you as well, too. So we'll see those. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Before you finish, Tom.
Yeah, that was her.
All right, moving on to item seven, Report on Personnel Policy Administration.
Yes, I can do that. So we met on June 25. Director of Community Relations, Linda Taylor, updated the group on the Community Relations Department portion of the strategic plan. And Dr. Fink and I updated the committee on the Administration and Personnel's portion of the strategic plan. So tonight, I'm looking for a motion, 7.2 of Personnel Policy and Administration Agenda Item, 7.3 to 7.4 as presented. Motion?
Second. Margarita's motion, Nora second.
Dalton?
Dr. Rulon?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Morelos?
Yes.
Ms. Seiden?
Yes, motion carries. Well, that was short and sweet, thank you. Moving on to Curriculum and Technology, Dr. Rulon.
I don't know, we had Jennifer Orellos do that. I, no.
Whatever you need.
So we met June 18, Wednesday, at still 6:30, but next week it's going to be at, or next time is going to be at 6 o'clock in August. So what we ended up talking about for a majority of that time was actually looking at the updates to the strategic plan for both CNI and also Student Services. Those presentations are in the packet from that meeting as well. Good information about where we are with strategic plan and what's to come. So very helpful with that. In addition to that, we had a conversation about high school graduation credit increases with the move to the eight-period day. We had a discussion and presentation about changes that would ultimately affect graduation credit decrease and then also because of that would also be an amendment to the High School Curriculum Guide, both of which will be for motion here momentarily. The final piece that we reviewed was the Westmere Elementary School Improvement Plan. Again, initial draft of that for approval, which would then come back as a more robust version later on when, you know, they have staff that comes back after summer, things like that. So with that, that's my update. And because of our conversation, I'm also looking to move for items, Agenda Items 8.3 through 8.5 to be approved as presented, and that is my motion.
Dr. Orellos' motion?
Mr. Nichols' second. I, so I do have a thought that I shared during the meeting. I would love to see, as part of the graduation in credit increase, still a consideration before we publish this and have to then change it later, one half of those two credits to be put toward personal finance as a requirement as opposed to sub semi-elective, the consumer area that's currently there. That's something I see from some of the other work that's been going on is likely to come down the pike in the next couple of years. And so it's something that would satisfy a lot of what we've heard from our community is a need for our graduates.
And in part of this with the graduation increase, right now it's affecting the elective, which that could be considered an elective course if that's something that is developed. So right now, the changes are simply to the credit increase and then also changing the graduation credit language in the curriculum guide. And I believe we talked about following that up with your question in future meetings. Is that right?
That's correct, that's correct.
So you're not looking to table the motion?
I would love to consider it, but if it's something that we think is going to really derail, that we could not get it accomplished this year.
In terms of it being a recommendation for this upcoming school year, the planning for the courses and the students selecting the courses for this upcoming school year has already taken place. So that would put us really in a crunch of not to be able to fulfill the requirement of what you're asking. But we could bring it back to the committee as a recommendation for the future, that we could bring it back, timing-wise, bring it back for the following school year. For this upcoming school year, it's not realistic to expect that we could have that implemented for this upcoming school year.
Okay.
And I'd also add on to that, the conversation about where do we already have that personal finance built into our current curriculum?
Yes.
As a requirement that that needs to be adjusted or a separate course be offered. I think that is.
Well, and there is a separate course currently with that title, but there are some components that are correct, in my understanding, right?
Yes, it's just not required. It's currently in the economics course? Personal finance is built into a number of courses in consumer education, in economics, and also as a dual-credit course, but none, but it is not part of a required course standalone personal finance. The request was, could we have 0.5 of the additional credit required for a personal finance course? And that has not been a conversation that's been, that has come out of committee. So based on our, on our last meeting, the request was, we'll take it back to committee, talk to them with that recommendation, and if, and if it's agreeable at the committee level, bring it back here in a year for the upcoming course guide. Because I agree with your honor. Certain.
All right, then, I'm okay moving forward with the SS. So are there any other comments? Or Dr. Rulon, you should probably be the one asking that.
For discussion on the items 8.3 through 8.5?
Okay, Charlie?
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Morelos?
Yes.
Dr. Rulon?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton?
Yes.
Ms. Seiden?
Yes, motion carries. All right, next up is the Site and Finance Committee, 9.1. Our Site and Finance Committee also met Wednesday night. The meeting was attended by myself, Elise Colanzas, Greg Nichols, Rick Engstrom, and Dr. Glenn Wood. And we also discussed strategic plan updates and on behalf of both the committee work that was done in our committee and the others, super impressive again this year as to all the work that's gone and accomplished under the strategic plan. We also, tonight, were planning to have a public hearing on the fiscal year 2026 budget for August, or that will now be moved to August. So with that being said, we can move on to approval of our Agenda Items 9.2 through 9.10 as presented. That is my motion.
And I'll second it.
And Mr. Nichols second, Charlie?
Ms. Morelos?
Yes.
Dr. Rulon?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Seiden?
Yes, motion carries.
So with that being said, I would like to go back and revise board salutes to add glassees and thank yous to the donators, because I'm sure the donatees are quite pleased. So we've got Meadowview's PTO, we've got the Asian Culture Association, and Boosters from North, the League of Illinois Bicyclists, and Wilco, all donated substantial amounts to the district. We are quite pleased to accept those.
Thank you. And thank you to all of them.
Yep.
Okay. Moving on to ForEx Another, 10.1.
10.1?
You want me to read that?
She did that already, that 10.1, just looking for a motion for.
Oh, yes, looking for a motion to approve authorization for approval authority to the Superintendent for All Candidate Recommendations, including Administrator Recommendations, from July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. So I will motion? Nora second? Charlie?
Dr. Rulon?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton?
Yes.
Ms. Morelos?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Seiden?
Yes, motion carries. 10.2, Approval of the Middle School Novelist That Has Been on 30-Day Public Display.
I'll make that motion.
Dr. Rulon's motion?
Second.
Erica's second?
Dalton?
Yes.
Dr. Rulon?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Morelos?
Yes.
Ms. Seiden?
Yes, motion carries. And 10.3, Approval of an Employment Agreement Between the Board of Education and Plainfield Community Consolidated School District 202 and Cheryl Phillips for the 2025-2026 school year.
It's removed.
Greg's motion?
Second.
Nora second? Charlie?
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Morelos?
Yes.
Dr. Rulon?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton?
Yes.
Ms. Seiden?
Yes, motion carries. For 10.4, I'll turn it over to Dr. Rulon.
For 10.4, I move that Student A receive alternative placement for the remainder of the 2024-2025 school year and all of the 2025-2026 school year as presented by the administration's recommendation.
Dr. Rulon's motion? We have a second?
Second.
Nora's second? Charlie?
Ms. Morelos?
Yes.
Dr. Rulon?
Yes.
Ms. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Seiden?
Yes, motion carries. For information, item 11.1, Intergovernmental Liaison.
Yep, I'll give an update in place of Mr. Westfall. The Wilco Board of Control met Tuesday, June 10. The last board, it was the last board meeting for two of our board members. One is Mary Tickner, the Superintendent in Lamont, and then Sherry Harris is the boards, or she's the Board Secretary, Wilco Secretary. So good send-off for them, appreciate their service. Big items were just the approval items were their handbook and tuition increase. The handbook is like their discipline and pieces. They did raising $50 increase in tuition this year. So for our, each Wilco student, we pay $2,650. It had been a while since they had increased, so they had made that proposal. And that's it.
Great, thank you. All right, any other, the other, I do not have one for Bolingbrook. Does anybody have any other ones? 11.2, Foundation for Excellence?
Real brief, much briefer even. Foundation met June 17, last Tuesday. Nothing was voted on, really just worked on the calendar for this upcoming year. The next meeting for the foundation is Tuesday, August 15, August 19.
Wonderful. Cape is on summer break. And were there any other? Okay. And the Board of Education report for Wilco, you gave that already, so we're covered there. 11.4, other, I don't think there's any other? Unfinished business, 12?
Nope.
13, any new business?
Nope.
14, Freedom of Information Status Report.
We've received seven freedom of information requests since the last Board of Education meeting. Stefan Johns, he was received May 15, due May 22, completed May 22. Justin Winnig, it was received May 16, due June 17. It was completed June 17. Al Muglich, this was a commercial request, received May 16, due June 17, completed June 17. Mike Vich, Records Retrieval Solutions, another commercial request, received May 27, due June 25, completed June 11. Ms. Laura Vies, it was received May 30, due June 6, completed June 6. Sherry Reed from Smart Procure, June, received June 2, due July 2. It's in progress, another commercial request. And then finally, C.T. Mills from Public Info Access, received June 17, due June 25. That one is still in progress.
Okay, announcements and scheduled activities.
Yep, so our next Board of Education meeting is scheduled for August 6 at the Administration Center, closed session 6:30, public session 7:30.
We have no need for a second closed session, so can I put a motion to adjourn? Margarita's motion and Nora's second. Charlie?
Ms. Dalton?
Yes.
Dr. Rulon?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Morelos?
Yes.
Ms. Seiden?
Of course, yes, thank you very much. Thank you all for coming out on a Monday night this time. Hopefully it means the rest of your week.
Very grateful, thank you.